And I don't really want to delve into why they did, but it certainly, when you get to in front of a judge, that's a big, that's a big no-no to just send something through without specific reasons because that's all they look at.
Yeah, but if the reason is it doesn't follow the general plan, that's a strong reason.
That's a strong reason, which is why I presented this to you. These are all town documents. That zone change.
And I can actually see some of these very supportive of making that, but I can also see some of them maybe not so supportive of making.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't know that it's just black and white.
It's not, and that's, it's an entire document. I highlighted things in there, but you should be familiar with everything in there.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's why there's a general plan. That's why. It goes toward the back, by the way. We used to fit on one page, but it's on the back too now, so.
Eric, you're putting your planning hat on at the moment. With regards to, I guess that would just be applicant-driven again. I mean, that's the end of the answer, but you know, how many properties would be considered along that side as a corridor before it got too close into town, there wouldn't be a corridor?
Well, I guess you'd have to weigh that out and see just how far it's.
Each applicant at each time and what happens.
We've got sixty acre parcel there that hasn't been developed. I mean, that's huge. We have a person looking at that that wants to make a gravel pit in there right now. There's a, there's a zone change for you.
That big piece on the other side, yeah?
Yeah, we have a town resident who wants to turn that into a big open pit.
Surface mine?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's some, there's some serious pressure for development that's coming into our town that we're gonna have to deal with. We better have our ducks in a row as this comes. These guys come with big money and big attorneys.
I think the mayor's question is the most important question. That's what I was asking earlier. How far up in the town plan? In other words, it specifies along that corridor, but how far up are we gonna let that come east?
Well, like we say, we can, we can decide how far up that comes as a town. I mean, that's what our long-term range is, but nobody saw that Beingly Rock would go in and purchase that property back there and intend clearly to run that pit all the way to Southfield Road. And they're well on their way.
That's where they're at.
That's their intention, is to go clear to Southfield Road. I sat in that public hearing and the Division of Natural Resources with them, and they wanted a buffer area along the fence because the deer come down, hop the fence and they, you know, they've gotta be surrendering there. They just flat told DNR, hey, cut the buffer on your own side of the fence. And that's just how it laid. So, I mean, they can go all the way to fence line. So, and everybody knows, if you live in Daniel, does that impact Daniel? All that dust blowing up through there, I mean, it's, it's very impactful. We have the county transfer station, it's impactful. I mean, all in Toronto, it's just, those kind of items in planning I look at because I'm living in that. I mean, they're back up in our school all the time. So, you know, when, when we come here and we're talking about two or three trucks, man, that's nothing. So, and, but that's out of the town control. This is in the town control, you know, as we kind of develop those, what is gonna be our buffer? What is gonna lead in? And what is the tax base for the town?
So it doesn't, it does not address that on the town plan? That's what it does.
It does not address a property line boundary where.
It doesn't, it doesn't say where to stop it. It just says that's where it should develop.
Yeah, and that's, as we look at that, I mean, it just makes sense. We don't have a.
I agree, that's, it's inevitable at some point.
In 2006, those, well, the property becomes more and more valuable. We're doing this eight twenty-five thing. We're trying to push into commercial areas. There aren't commercial areas.
No.
And so if you, if you don't want businesses here or people that can run the businesses, then don't make commercial. You know, the whole valley wide, you still may, so you become a bedroom community. Well, that's pretty hard to sustain.
Yep. Along this same idea, if, if we let one property go commercial, how do we say the next one can't? Do we say, oh, all of a sudden you violate the town general plan? Do you violate this or whatever? Seems like once that line starts, we would have a really rough time stopping it if people wanted to continue on with commercial. And, and I'm in agreement, we want commercial, and I think I support this, this change whatever, but we need a plan somehow to, to say, okay, how do you stop it? Because the next property to it would have a really good argument as to, hey, why him and not me?
Would that have to be a zone change to go through the whole street world to change if we did put a line or put a boundary?
Oh, no, you could, you could actually do the land use plan. You can do that. We just draw the written land use plan. You could attach a map to that and make, and try and, I mean, we had, well, who do we have here? The Mountain Land Association of Governments, they showed up and says, okay, you're gonna get ten thousand residents before you fund them. Well, we looked at the town of Daniel, it's like, not here. Because we don't, you know, we're, we're past fifty percent build-out. As long as we have the five acre parcels, we just don't have the capacity for ten thousand. So, that's why we started looking into items of, of cluster development and maybe some things that could hold rural atmosphere.
How do you feel about that, Eric? Do you think that the town could actually draw a line between two properties and say, okay, no more commercial from this point in?
We've already done that, right here on this commercial. I mean, you didn't say no more, but right now, you can do commercial here. Everything else is application-driven.
Yeah, so it's application-driven. So if, just for example, we're coming up, because it's the area of interest, if we're coming along here and you get commercial and then your neighbor wants to get commercial and then on down the line, can we, I don't know that we can come in and say, okay, you can't go past here anymore commercial.
We draw that right at your house, John, right?
Yeah, wherever.
Right at your west.
Yeah, wherever we draw. I think that town is absolutely in control. I think that's what all this documentation is.
But, but wouldn't that, wouldn't that adjacent person have a really good case or to go back and say, hey, my neighbor's doing it? Kind of like what you're getting at right now. You're saying Crossme's industrial, Crosstears industrial, here's, we sit on the corridors. Now this guy's gonna say, hey, next to me is commercial, why not me?
Well, the only reason I bring that up is because that's our, that's in the town. Industrial is in the town. Those other uses were not controlled by the town. Those are in other, those are in other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
And so as we look at this document that says it should be compatible with the neighborhood, I bring that up for that reason. I think it does fall in the industrial, but what we're looking for is softer gentler as we move in because of where we are and what we do.
Yeah.
But I think John's asking you, how is, how are, is the town gonna hold it going to court if, say,
Lighthouse is up.
The house, yeah, the house next to me is commercial and I decide I want to be, but you guys drew a line. And how are you gonna defend that in court, saying he is, but I'm not, and I wanna be?
See, and that's a great question, and I can answer that on the training from the League of Cities and Towns. Judges are reluctant to overturn unless it's arbitrary and capricious, and that's what I say about this, where you just say, no. You gotta have a reason. There's gotta be something there.
Traffic, infrastructure.
And that's what the judge looks at. And so it, time could be a factor, even time. It may not be the time to do it.
I, I think that would be really hard to stop any coming this way. A real deal. Hopefully they don't apply, right?
Well, no, I, I mean, it's their right to apply.
It is.
It is their right to apply. Everybody can apply, and that's, I mean, that's, that's the thing about where we live and what we do. That's a property right we have is to apply and do.
So you pay the big bucks to make those hard decisions?
Well, like I say, it's, it's pretty outlined in the League of Cities and Towns what, what those, what those conditions are. And when it gets to the judge, that's what they look at. When they take that document, they're not looking at everything else. They're looking at why. And it would be hard to justify if you don't have a reason now. And, and you don't even have to get to the judge. The Board of Adjustments is gonna look at that. Our own town Board of Adjustments, and that's what happens at the County of Law. Chip sits on, or sat on that, I don't know if you're still there. There's, there's a ton of that. It just comes in and it's just like, there's no need. What do we hang this on?
Yeah.
And so, and that does away with the good old boy network.
Oh, I understand that, and that's what scares me about coming on down the line.
Yeah, when I'm gonna talk with Ken about that, I'll ask him about the probability and how that may or may not. Maybe they'll know when we go over the stuff together.
And do you have any insight on that, Ken?
Well, it's, it's really hard to try and stay neutral through all of this, so.
Well, couldn't my work?
I mean, I don't, I don't really have an interest to gain in this personally. But, you know, there's just a few questions. I think planning has only addressed a few of these. But this, this property, which is called the Wentz.
Wyant.
Wyant?
Yeah, Harry Wyant property.
He came before the town, went through all the applications, and he did get this zone commercial. And the only thing that stopped it is we hit that downturn in the economy, and it was pretty tough to get your hands on money, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Because all the banks didn't have any.
They went wrong.
Then when this project didn't go through, the town, and I don't know what the reason for this was, I really don't, but I think I missed two meetings and this all flew by me because I wasn't planning a zoning at the time. But my question was, why is this back in an armpit? And everybody from, from the town council, I mean, some, there haven't been majority to get it passed. And it had to go back through planning again, but it did go through. Now, if this remains commercial, right here, I can just see that project being completed, and please, I'm not trying to excite you, I'm just trying to put all this information out as, as the way I might see it. But you've actually got a place there where people stop, buy a soda, gas, their truck. I, I can't remember the other uses Harry had there, but there was five or six.
Storage units.
Even some storage. But if there's a light right here, you come off, you get your goodies and what have you, and you're headed to Vernal or to Strawberry? And you think you're, you go to pull out here and there's five cars backed up waiting for the light to change. And you know the direction you're headed. What are you gonna do? You're gonna turn around three down the south. So, so what you do here commercially does have effect on the town. And I can tell you right now, Eric, Mr. Bunker and Mrs. Bunker wouldn't be having so much of a tackle right now if that property was still commercial. And I'm not in favor one way or the other. I'm just simply saying, how do you protect your, your general plan overall? And John, John said, well, where does this end? Well, you can go over to this side of the map. I'd say, where's it gonna end over here? Well, when you think about it, I don't, I don't see this threatened quite as much to the infrastructure of the town here as what might possibly happen over there. But at the same time, look at all the industrial property and look at the airport. I mean, look at the, the transfer station in the south. And, and I'm sure that at twelve o'clock at night, you've got twenty-four lights on in that building? Well, you can probably go out and pick night crawlers off your lawn.
Eric, what if we, what if we sent it back to planning and had them give us some specific reasons as to why or why not? Recognize they gave us an answer, but maybe have them, have us kick it back, say, hey, guys, we, we kinda needed justification as to why. Would, do you think that would help? Would you feel?
I just, I just feel like we're whipping on the planning commission.
Okay.
I just feel like that that's, you're sending that back because of the planning director.
For me, I just need to type, chew on it and look at Dolbit. I want discussions. I know we took Harry's back. I kinda understood why because the plan fell through and we didn't know what he might do, and so we didn't have a plan, so we brought him back, assuming that if he ever applied again, most likely he'd start getting it and depending on what that plan might be. So that was some of the thinking back when we took her, but that's what it's.
Well, this would, now, Eric might have to, he'll have to tell me if I'm wrong because I probably.
I'll get it to him.
But I, I mean, when you turn in a concept and that and they approve it, I thought you only had, is it a year to do something with this? And he didn't, you guys gave him several years. And then, yeah, and then when he still didn't do nothing, then it became, and like you said, then that's why you took it back because, and it wasn't because he didn't, he didn't want it being, took it back, but he hadn't, like you said, the ground, so he had turned in his concept. We're not turning in no concept. We're just going, making this. And then it will have our year if we turn in our consent, but you know what I mean? So his was already, you had a whole thing of what he was doing.
Yeah, they did those simultaneously.
Yeah.
Concept approval and the zone change, which was a condition of.
Exactly. So you guys gave him three years, not one, you know, which that was, so that's why it got turned back over.
And that's typical when you're buying property. People will condition upon, if I can get the zone change to do it along with that, I mean, so this is different. We don't have a, we don't have a concept.
So one other question on that, Eric. The, the wall that they were supposed to put in, that's concept level, right? That's not zone change level.
Right, that was, well, it is, yeah, that would be concept. When the use changes, that's when that would instigate, yeah. It could be commercial and sit there forever the way it is, but wouldn't it?
But once a concept comes in, that's where.
That's, and see, and we was, they're, they're good for a year on that concept, and then we can just as a town, increase that by a year, which we did. I mean, he didn't ask for it. We just, we know the economy's bad, things happen. But then it went another year, and then we start hearing the concepts are changing on that property. It might be for sale. Well, at that point, if you don't do something with the concept, then you're exactly right. It was a great sell at that time. This is what we're gonna do. Everybody bought off. That's a great thing. Let's do it. But that expired, and so that's where you start to lose.
So the question I have then about this concept, so since he already had that, somebody could have bought it and did what they wanted because there was already a concept on that.
They could have done that concept.
Yeah.
Or they could have to come back and reapply.
Yeah, but if it's just not a concept, then nothing's going, nothing happens.
Right.
Till.
Well, and that's, that's the process. You're not gonna go spend a bunch of money to get a concept on something that's never gonna be changed commercial. Why would you spend that money to build a whole concept on something that you couldn't zone change? I mean, that's just, if you're trying to sell that, then the concept's a great idea. If you're gonna build the, the big sign like he was, it's welcome to the town of Daniel. You sell that to, to the folks that are, you're trying to get the zone change through, then that's fine, but if you just come in, and that's why I say that, when they say, what are you gonna do? Well, open the commercial thing and pick one. All these are approved in a commercial zone. Pick one, any one of them, because I don't have a concept. I'm not required to have a concept at the zone change. So that's why there's not a concept, because I'm just not gonna spend the money to put it out there if it's never gonna be changed zone.
Sure. Can I ask one more question? So if we, we do have this list of things you can do in a commercial zone. If someone wants to do one of those things, there's not really much we can do about it.
No, there's not.
So.
And that's what we said. If, if we don't like something on that list, we need to get it off.
Yeah, oh, I understand. I, I understand. But as far as that goes, concept approval, that, that doesn't really mean anything, does it? I mean, if, if I have a commercial piece and I'm gonna do something that's on that list, you can't tell me no.
Right.
So.
And then, so that's why, that's why this one Harry had was so important for the concept, because we don't allow storage units.
Yeah, so that was the only key thing that let us.
That tied it into his, on his nitro pack.
Yeah.
With his seeing that that was incidental to the main use.
So if we do approve a zone change, there's nothing that says we have to enforce walls or boundaries or.
Oh, yeah.
Upments.
Yeah, eight twenty-one is transition zone between residential.
And commercial.
And commercial, and that's what required that wall, six foot high.
But, oh, so it was that that required the wall and not that it was a different use that's not in on it?
That's correct, yeah. So eight twenty-one comes into play, I was trying to.
And con, oh, sorry, and concept approval is required. And so you're right, he didn't need to necessarily build that concept, but he'd have to come back with another concept. It's not like we could just go straight to building permit. So you got concept approval and then we go to building permit. So if he said, I changed my mind, I don't wanna do that, I wanna do something different. Then we go back and we get concept approval and things like, well, the fence has to stay, the wall has to stay, or that doesn't work, or this works if we do that. We, we still get invited, that apple, I guess, is gonna change.
It seems to me though, Ryan, that concept approval is more transition approval than concept approval. They can do whatever they want.
Yes.
The only thing we can really work on is the transition zone. Is that kinda right?
Also, you're right that if it's in the commercial list, it's allowed. I mean, if it's an allowable use, then it's allowed, but we still can go through a commercial concept approval and, and correct things or change, you know, make sure that buffer is.
Yes, we, it's almost a buffer type of thing that we're approving as compared to a.
Well, I think when we get into any kind of building, then the road access and traffic, that's where it's really gonna come into play in the building permit, would that not be here?
Yeah, that's one.
That also allows plenty of weather. I mean, they can say commercial and they could say there's no access from the little road. Well, we still say commercial, but maybe couldn't get a building permit. I'm not talking specifically as much as a piece of property in general.
Yeah, and we've got those properties that have other restrictions on them. And if you remember, Harry, what he wanted to do was put the storage units right up against the fence and use that wall for the fence. Well, clearly eight twenty-one says we have to be twenty feet of landscape, but he just wanted to build the wall and go back to those. And that's where, that's where the issue came on the concept, is he wanted to push it. We're like, no, it's clearly in eight twenty-one, you need the twenty-foot landscape, so.
Well, any questions or comments from the others? Tell that to the motion on what we do for this item?
Well, just looking at this, Chip, I don't even think you need a motion. We're just reviewing the recommendation letter, so I think it will just automatically carry forward.
I mean, I do have that too, just because we, so.
And I still don't have to.
Okay, excuse me. I just have one question. I'm sorry I didn't ask when you brought it up before. Just to make this clear, the planning commission denied this and there's nothing in there as to reasons at all.
They just wanted more information, is what they said.
Okay.
So it was kind of, it was kind of a strange, you know, because usually if you want more information, you continue and ask for that information, but as the night went, and, and like I say, it's touchy, so I didn't drill them for that because I don't wanna beat them with the board.
Yeah.
Being on that, so I just.
I guess I would argue that given, you know, the discussion that you've had, especially yours about, you know, how can you deny things as they, you know, step on down? Where do you draw the denial? I, I guess I would say it'd be a really good idea to have it as a standard practice that your planning commission gives reasons for anything.
Right.
They deny.
Right, and if this would have been.
Or even approve for that matter, but especially deny.
Yeah, and if this had been somebody else's application, we would have had that discussion, I see. So.
I get that. I get that you would have led that that way.
Yeah, yeah, we would have had that discussion right there before it passed, so it's just kind of a touchy situation and.
But that's where your defensibility comes from.
Yeah.
It's gotta be there.
Yeah, otherwise it's barbarity, capricious, and it's like, they love that. It's easy for the judge.
Anything else? So I guess we won't take a motion on it. We'll just continue that until next month.
You have an easy one.
Recommendation letter from Planning, adoption code eight point two five, Home Occupation Office and Business Amendment A. We have a recommendation from the planning commission. I'd like to read that. Chapter eight point two five addendum. Please be advised that the Daniel Planning Commission recommends the following. Commissioner Norris motion to adopt eight point two five ordinances with the following changes and send it to Daniel Town Council. Section eight point two five point oh eight, take out the sentence, existing permits shall be renewed when applied for. As I went through this recommendation and what it's gonna be changed into, I, I like these recommendations. I think that they weren't one way or the other, too strong or too weak, and so us and the planning have come together for this last year and they were down to these three items, and I, I don't have a problem with these three items at all. And if we do change it, we'll be sending them back to planning again. The section eight point two five point one one or point eleven, after the first sentence, add the sentence, permits must be renewed on a biannual basis. Something up for discussion was biannual or annual, and I'll continue reading and we can come back and discuss. Section eight point two five point one two, K and N, we are combining and should read as follows. Large industrial equipment such as backhoes, trackhoes, mini trackhoes, skid steers and lifts are allowed. No more than four pieces total. Shipping, shipping, transport and trucking businesses are not allowed except for owner operator with a cap of two combinations. M, take this sentence out completely. O, add this sentence, no hazardous material will be allowed. We thank you for your consideration on this matter, planning commissioner. Let's open it up to public and see if there's any questions or comments, and if so, I'd like you to come up and discuss it. No, I'll take it to the council and, sure, I think, Mark, or?
I'm just curious on one thought here. On that line, K. Me owning two trucks.
Hold on here, hold on here.
K. I was on the, during the last, last draft into section twelve.
Right, K. Okay.
Large, large industrial equipment such as backhoes, trackhoes, mini trackhoes, skid steers, lifts are allowed. No more than four pieces total. And then it's supposed to continue to shipping, transport, trucking businesses are not allowed except for owner operators, which would, I would follow in that category with a cap of two combinations. Going back up to no more than four pieces total. I'm, I'm assuming that that might allow me to have one of these other items there, possibly like a backhoe or a trackhoe or a fork lift or something. Would that be the way you guys would interpret that?
I kinda looked at it from what we passed back to them, they just dropped it one, one, one number on it. That's, that's, you know, whether we combine, anyway, I see we added no hazardous materials, but that they canceled out medical dental insurance business are not allowed, so M's gone. So they really just combined K and N, and my understanding is that planning would like to take it, you know, down a notch from five to four and from four to two.
But I think what you're gonna add, Mark, is you want, you have two combinations. Can you have still four pieces of equipment?
No.
Or two?
Would, would my, would my cap still be at four? Could I add one of them other industrial types of equipment there?
And I think certainly you should be able to, but I don't think this is clear on that really.
Well, it's kind of.
I thought we, I thought we talked about that being, that, that, some of that would be personal stuff as well, because everybody has that. Everybody we know has a backhoe.
And that's another number.
I thought that's how we, I thought that's how we left it, but.
We did. And then the thought came to mind was the guy we had in here with all the dumpsters that says they're all personal. And has seventeen of them down the fence line.
Can that change planning's direction?
Well, that's still, it's still an option we're talking about.
Right.
I mean, Joe W is in here. He can show a line of ownership. Well, has anybody been past Joe's?
Yeah.
Trackhoes, dirt, separators, I mean, this is an industrial operation.
I don't really know.
Well, as I went through this multiple times, it still goes back to the complaint. It used to be supposed to be hidden. And so, not that that's a catch-all, but it's kind of a catch-all. If, you know, we need to be in accordance with the neighbor, the neighborhood, the housing, you know, everything around it. So there's a huge question mark on the nuisance side of things, but I don't know if one vehicle really changes as much as but now we have the planning on board, they've seen it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we're close.
We're really close.
I, I think maybe what might help, Mark, is here if we say, and trucking businesses are not allowed except for owner operator with a cap of two combinations and two other pieces of equipment, so that they could have a total of four, two trucks and two pieces of equipment. That would be their four. See what I mean?
Truck and trailer, truck and trailer four, truck and trailer one?
One combination, truck and trailer one.
Okay.
So, so we would allow two trucks and trailers and two other pieces of equipment like a backhoe or a skid steer for their four.
I think that's, I think that's excellent.
That's kind of the way I interpret this, but I wanted some clarification.
Really what we had.
I, I think it's open for interpretation though, the way it's written. I think we can clarify it and state that more clearly.
Do that again for me one more time. Let me get to both, let me read it. So we took it on eight what?
Twenty-five twelve.
Twenty-five twelve, okay.
Just, just at the end, and it says, and trucking businesses are not allowed except for owner operator with a cap of two combinations and two other pieces of equipment.
If we, interpretation is one thing, if we change this, go back to planning. Would that be correct, Adam?
Well, yeah, I mean, we hammered that out quite a while.
We thought we did.
Oh, I don't, it doesn't have to go back to planning. It doesn't have to.
And why did it have to go back before or didn't have to go back the first time?
Well, I think we kept doing that because we want, they're the ones that's going to be, you've sent this entire.
I agree, we wanted, as much as we.
Well, it's not only that, this document sends those business licenses to planning.
There you go.
And so do they have a vested interest? Yeah, you're making them responsible to do all these applications. So I think if, if it's not clear to them, you have a problem.
I would agree.
So what do you guys think on that? Do you think that's clear now or? As, as it's written right now, how many pieces of equipment could owner operator have?
See, the way I, I read that is no more than four.
And then broken down into categories, no more than four is the, is the limit, right?
Right.
Shipping, transport and trucking businesses are not allowed except for owner operator with a cap of two combinations. And you're saying it, just for that, change it to four combinations?
Oh, no, no, no. Change it to four combinations, but have them have two combinations and then a backhoe and a skid steer.
See, yeah, because the way I read that, he can have four pieces plus the two combinations.
Now, see, I can read it that way too.
Yeah.
But I can read it, I can read it, Mark, but.
Let's clarify what we're gonna clarify then.
Yeah, and I don't really care what it is, but let's.
I think that's why we separated those two. I think that's why we had them separated, shipping business versus the, the equipment. I think that's why we separated that so there wasn't that crossover back and forth. And, and another, just a side note on that, I don't see how this owner operator having a truck there versus some of the guys that pull into town and park for the night and get up and go. It's the same impact, it's the same everything, other than he's gonna license into town. And the other guys are driving for somebody else. They just bring their truck home, it's the same impact.
Yeah. Which is one truck impact, but not a, yeah.
Yeah, right, right. And so we're allowing one extra truck if you're owner operator.
Yeah.
I mean, we still don't let them park on the town right of way. We're still pretty active about that, but.
How do we, how do we clear that up tonight?
Boy, I don't know, because that's what I said, when we had them separated, it was so much clearer.
Yeah.
Because, because it was just, man, there, there is a shipping transport business and there's the other.
Okay, then we need to change K to the number of K then.
Yeah, so we'd keep a K and an N, put N back as starting in the shipping, transport.
But as far as the numbers on, uh, yeah.
The order.
Yeah.
So if we took K, it would make sense to me to put shipping as L and then go on down. Because they're kind of related. But it doesn't matter.
So was the language three visible from front edge to end?
They, they just, that was a total turn off for visible. They just didn't, they didn't see that that was a big deal, whether you could see it or whether you couldn't, it's still there. So it wasn't, that, that wasn't the end of. Yeah, that, that was, it started good and then it just like, why have we got that? Who cares? If you got three, you got three, whether you can see them or not. So that's how that discussion kind of went that direction.
Basically, we're going for a cap of four, right?
That, that's how I'm trying to determine, if we're gonna take that total of four pieces, the three.
So in either case, a cap of four is the one.
Okay.
Add that to.
I'm fine, whatever.
Really, not really changing much and just kind of clarifying.
Yeah, just making sure that we.
I had our time describing what I tried to remember, and that's when I started reading this again and wondering if we needed to.
Because I can read this right now where owner operator can't have any other equipment, the two trucks and or trailers. Yeah, two, two combinations. I can see that, but these guys ought to probably have a backhoe or.
Yeah, we'd be needing skidsters here pretty quick.
So would, so, so wouldn't, uh, yeah. So if we did a tractor-trailer, excuse me, a tractor and a, well, and a trailer is, is one, then the four pieces come into play. Meaning he's got his two semis and trailers, that's two, plus two other twos.
Quick, yeah.
So. How, how do we just make that clarity amongst ourselves or anybody else to ask or read about it?
A combination counts as one, right?
Right. So, so we've got to define that somewhere.
Yeah, we should just say a combination counts as one.
A truck and trailer.
Combination truck and trailer.
Parentheses, combination, truck and trailer.
What do they, what do they consider that as, as a truck and pup is one still?
Um, a combination can be considered as much as two trailers.
That's what I, that's what I mean.
You mean a triple?
Yep, well, yeah.
Truck and two trailers.
Well, I.
And so, I mean, I don't want, because we're gonna get this because we've had that. Here's a trailer and here's a pup, that counts as two. No, that's one, they pulled over one truck. We've already crossed this, so.
That's why I said in parentheses, truck and one, truck and trailer.
Traders, you'd have to pay us.
Well, that's when a combination comes into effect, you can't pull any more than the so, X amount of feet legally down the road.
Right, and that's what.
And that could be one trailer or a combination of up to three trailers if you wanted to get into that.
Can you say scenario where a truck would be a triple trailer going in a, in a residence, trying to turn around or do anything? And a, a resident have a triple trailer in there? And how long and coming off three thousand, can you make the turn?
It's amazing what those guys can do.
They can, I, I've seen Mark, Mark and Gopam out up a tree.
And they back them up.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, let's focus on the fourth and, or back to the K and N if we're gonna keep them both or, or separated.
Okay, so I didn't get that email, John, that you sent out. For some reason, I'm not on your list. So you sent out emails to the planning commission and the council. I, for some reason, have not received any of your emails.
I, I haven't sent one for a long time now. And what I usually do is I say, I send it to Lynn.
You had one here at the planning commission, you said, everybody was referring to it. I didn't know what that was because apparently I'm left off of that list.
No, what I do is I send it to Lynn and then say, Lynn, would you please distribute it?
The last two times I have them, I sent it to Eric Bunker, emailed, so you should have received it.
Yeah, so we get to the meeting and everybody says they have it, and I don't have it.
It's a top secret thing.
Well.
Need to know basis, you know.
But, but actually, I, I'm very supportive of what we have here. This is awesome.
The new one or the old one? What, what are we looking at?
The changes from the planning commission.
Okay.
If, if we can just tweak this last thing so it's clear, I'm happy with it.
This is what I wrote in the last meeting to make my note match. If you're curious.
See if that's what Chip's got, see if Chip's got the same thing.
Well, this is, this is the recommendation there, and this is, this is the last.
Included in, yeah, so you've crossed this back off, included in item K above. Yeah, and we got rid of the visible, visible's gone, that's correct. And so that's what they discussed.
Still, okay.
Yeah, so visible is still off, because that, they put that out in this one. What we're doing is taking this eight twenty-five twelve recommendation and separating those two again.
Okay.
So that will be back, the visible will be there, but we're separating the trucking versus the equipment, which will allow you to two combinations and two pieces of equipment.
At least.
Well, that's what we're at right now.
I'm fine with that.
So, Mark, on combinations, how important is, is it for you guys to have two trailers? If a combination was a truck and a trailer, is, is that enough or do you need to have a truck, a trailer and a trailer?
It varies.
He's limited by length.
Well, I, I guess a triple, I, I have a hard time with a triple in a residential. I think if you had a ship, you'd be on the road and your fellow would be at the house typically linked to it.
Well, and that's, that's another thing, the combination, so he's got a flatbed to move equipment, but he's out with the tanks. There's another combination trailer sitting there because there's a trailer in there.
And that's okay, right, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, that's, I think that works for four pieces. Or something like that.
Well, yeah, except for what we're talking about is a combination of two. And so it would count, it would, your four pieces wouldn't be there if you had two trailers sitting out there that you wasn't using. That would be your two combination, right? A truck's missing, but you got two trailers. So now we're counting one of those trailers as a combination, even though it's just parked there. And so that's what, you see.
I see, yeah.
Because he's got different trailers for doing different things with this truck.
So are we saying that whether it's a trailer by itself or the tractor and a trailer, not two trailers, but just a, a regular flatbed rig? But that, in my mind, that would be the combination and not a triple adding on, so we have six trailers, or, you know, six trailers now plus a, a tractor.
Yeah, what is the trailer considered? Is that part of the combination?
Well, that's what I'd like to get to tonight.
Absolutely. Because you could line up the whole backyard of trailers, is that, because they're not a truck, they don't count?
So what do you, what do you think, Mark, on the, on the trailer? You, you need to be able to have the two trailers kind of behind one truck?
Yes.
Okay, so how?
At your residence.
Well, I bring it, when I come home to park, just like anybody else, yes.
And that's what they're doing, I mean, we have two trucks.
So how do we work that into here? Is it clear? Maybe it's clear that a combination is a truck, trailer and a trailer.
It's clear.
Okay, so let's, let's work this out, let's work that out then.
And the reason I asked a lot of this was, there's more people than just me as a trucking business. There's an excavator that might have a truck and a transport trailer behind a dump truck. Plus he takes, has two, maybe two excavators or a wheel over or something that he.
And a dump truck.
Yeah, and it kind of would limit the numbers there, but it would also include his, his yellow iron, so to speak. So, as in the four pieces.
And looking like, let's say a lowboy. You got a big piece of equipment, you got a lowboy, that, does that lowboy hook with a trucker, is parked there? Is that, so that's, looks like three pieces to me, that'd be three. You've got a flatbed and a lowboy and a tractor and something else, that's four pieces.
So see, with one truck, you're already over the limit.
But, but it doesn't have to be, but I mean, in my mind, that's how, how it could be defined. And I don't think that's the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, but that's what.
What somebody could say, yeah.
Yeah, and they certainly will.
And they will.
And they certainly will.
So let's just define the combination.
Yeah.
Obviously, it has to be legal, so it can't be, was it a seventy-seven feet, Mark?
Eighty-two feet of cargo carrying space. Eighty-two feet from the tanker.
In the end.
It's gotta be.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Yeah, I, I, coming in tonight, I thought we were pretty close on the, on these. If we're off by one trailer, I think we've all given and taken quite a bit on, on, on this for the while, I, I.
I'd be happy just to forget I said anything, just leave it the way it is.
Well, I guess I, John had mentioned something, and I've mentioned planning too. I, I do respect their decision, they, they are smart, they chew, they chew things very thoroughly and, and.
It could have been, we just wore them out with this before the zone changed.
It could have been, I, I think this is, uh, tightened just a little bit, and it could have been more, but not much. I, I know you'd prefer that third trailer, and you'd like that need. Whether to keep K and N or separate them out and, and clarify the four pieces, I think that's what we need to do tonight and we can be done with this if we can. Mark did say he wished he didn't say anything, and so he might, you know, two tractors, two trailers.
But we do have, we do have.
Plus two others.
Right across town, the dump truck, the pup, transport. I mean, it's not, it's not isolated, we have more than one. Can I say that, just more than one? So I think that that will be coming if you, I mean, I, I understand that maybe three's intrusive, but if you start looking at, if you start looking at a flatbed and tanker and the truck, because you're three, then maybe it's not too much.
And every person's gonna have a problem with one trailer, because everyone's got a trailer, especially if you count.
Right, and that's my personal trailer.
And we're trying to clarify four pieces of equipment, and so four, we.
Well, I'm just talking about the combination.
Right, well, in my mind, a combination, you know, was, was a tractor trailer, I didn't really consider it, tell, see if you had a triple trailer, so.
Yeah.
I was always thinking, not for anybody.
So I, I, I don't know, John, what do you think about that? This is what your email was about, right? Combination.
I don't even remember the email, Larry.
It seems like that's what brought up this combining.
Just concern on the numbers.
Let me ask you.
It was on the numbers.
Does this sound okay? A combination consists of a tractor and two trailers, whether attached or separate.
I have a problem with three trailers, tractor and three trailers being one piece of equipment. I, I, in my mind, I'm betting with a tractor and a trailer as one piece, but I can do that. I can't do with another triple trailer. That'd be, that'd be six.
You mean, you mean double, a double?
I do mean a double trailer, yes, I'm sorry.
You went right for the big triple.
You went right for the triple, that's what I think, I, I didn't know we'd gone that far yet.
No, in my mind, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought we'd been there.
Yeah, a set of triples is no longer than a set of doubles put together. They can't exceed eighty-two feet.
That foot requirement.
It's just a kind of, it's just a different combination of trailers.
But I see some of being, I see some being not used very often in park, in a, in a yard for some period of time because it's not considered one of those.
So, so.
That would be.
A combination consists of a tractor.
Hooked up, in my opinion.
But it takes it over four to six.
Yeah. Let's try this one. A combination consists of a tractor and a trailer, whether attached or separate.
So are you defining it?
I'm, I'm looking for input. Basically defining it so that we have that quantity that you're looking for.
What do you think, Mark?
I'm lost somewhere in the.
Read it again.
Read it again for me.
A combination consists of a tractor and a trailer, whether attached or separate. So you could leave a trailer.
So it'd have to say trailers.
Yeah.
Right? They'd have to say trailers, because if you have a double.
No, he's, he's making it a single trailer right now.
We said we didn't want double. That's what I'm asking.
But then your two other equipments could be trailers.
So you have three trailers and one tractor, and for your four.
Well, that's, yeah. It's hard to get it into words, Mark, that's the hard part.
It's hard to anticipate what somebody else besides you and other some other people are coming in.
Well, I, I think that's an important thing that we need to do. Once this is done, we have the wording, I think we need to go back and write the definitions. I think we need to put definitions to this, so we're not guessing. This is the definition of that.
Last year, Eric, didn't you say?
Dude, you got four more years, you're right.
I'd agree, definitions and, uh, would be a must.
I think, especially on this, I mean, because we just don't, we're talking, right here, we've got so many different definitions on.
So if he had two combinations, he could, he could literally have two tractors, two trailers, you know, a trailer attaching each one, a skid steer and a backhoe like everybody else in town.
You know, on the, on the combination, I think we could do something along the lines of, if, uh, if a combination of trailers is not hooked to a truck and left in the yard, and just kind of follow, follow my train of thinking, that that could count towards a total of four pieces. So I guess where I'm going with this is.
That's what you said, same thing.
If, if I leave a set of trailers in the yard, whether it be two or three trailers, and I'm not attached to it with the truck, it's a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Same.
That's stored, that, that's like stored in the yard, like a forklifter.
Three trailers, three pieces of equipment.
That's what you're trying to kind of say too, is what you'd like to see a cap. Then, and I, and I look at it, I see that point as very valid. And if I, I need to find another place to store that many trailers if I have that many there. If I have more than four trailers, I need to find a place to store more.
So I.
Or not be using them, I need to get rid of them, so.
You'd be over there at Wasatch with Scott Keel.
Yeah.
So, so let me see if I, you read it, what you have, starting with the shipping part though, which is the end.
I don't have that. Oh, my God, that's what I wrote to be at the end.
Would this help, I guess?
So basically, what I was gonna say is, is whatever we have at the end of that, in other words, once we get down to trucking, this is more or less a definition, an explanation at the end, that just.
at the end, that just says, "A combination consists of a tractor and a trailer, whether attached or separate."
I like that, I can.
But the combination consists of a tractor and a trailer, whether attached or separate.
I still think you have to make that plural, trailers.
Trailers?
Because if calling two trailers, we're saying that's a.
Why, we don't get over the four, right?
Right. That's a combination. If we're allowing two combinations, then that's a truck and trailer.
So, so help me understand the, this part of.
Well, I think he just clarified, he said that's what he wants, and we're, we're doing a truck and trailer, he didn't bring up a pup or a second trailer and, and.
But if we're calling a combination, a truck and a trailer and a pup.
But we're not, he's only, we're not.
Well, we started out with that.
Well, yeah, that's what we said.
That's what we started out with and then we went to, then we went to a, a combination consists of a tractor and a trailer. Singular.
Yeah, didn't you say a combination is a truck and?
Combination can be, combination can be anything that's big.
Right, and so if a truck, a trailer and a-
Do we need a picture?
Yeah.
Three lines, make it square for the cat, trailer.
As soon as you get it done, we're taking a picture and it'll be.
Oh, we have a truck. And a trailer. Say, this might be the biggest amount of trailers you could have with the drawbar between the two.
That's a combination, right?
That's a combination. This is also a combination, this much forward is also considered a combination.
And that's my interpretation.
That's what you're saying? So, a combination to the, to the DOT can be up to as much as, um, three trailers, but it can exceed.
Is that eighty-four?
Eighty-two feet. Right here.
Which is obviously going to be the easiest way to interpret that, is the foot, the combination is an eighty-two foot.
So a forty-seven foot or a sixty foot, I mean, take the, the twelve foot, no, I don't know.
I don't know that we want to put a new definition that UDOT's already made.
A single trailer's a pretty clear definition.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think UDOT has any implications on what they consider something, what the person, what we consider something.
So, so Mark, see if this works.
All the combinations.
See if this works for you.
Yeah, but it's easier for us to hang our hat on something they already got.
It's what Brent was said, but altogether. Shipping, I'm sorry. Shipping, transport and trucking businesses are not allowed except for owner-operator with a cap of two combinations. A combination consists of a tractor and trailer, whether attached or separate.
I love it, I'd love to move on.
I thought we had an S to trailers. We started with an S and Chip, Chip was with a-
Well, just, just, we have trailers, except for, I, I'm just not keen on, I mean, I, that looks like two pieces, two pieces of equipment to me. You know, a combination can be the singular or it can be the eighty-two, it can be both.
But I, if I take my truck and leave, I still have four pieces of equipment stored on the trailer if you count two trailers. For all the two pieces, four pieces of equipment. If I take both trucks and leave, there won't be any more than four trailers around the four, four pieces of equipment.
So, so what I see you could have with this, Mark, is a tractor and a trailer, a tractor and a trailer and two extra trailers. That's what I see you could have here.
That's what Chip was okay with.
Yes.
That's, that's, if that's the way it sounds, that's.
That's, that's the way I would interpret this.
Okay. So whether you want to load up on skid steers or something, or trailers or something, I mean, you know, all of us are going to have our own little bits of equipment, we're, we're still at four and we're classifying a tractor and a, assuming a trailer has one, so that gives you the four. I like that.
Good, man. So that gives you two trucks and four trailers. Okay.
So what do you do with your forklift? Your truck though?
I don't have it, or else I don't have two trailers there, I don't have a fourth trailer.
Just parked them across the highway.
Just the same thing as everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, there's limits.
Well, and now we're good at your place, but what about the neighbor?
For one of them at your neighbor's house for the other.
Well, I mean, he's got a skid steer and a truck though, a trailer. You know, and so.
Yeah, this, this limits that, there, there's a limit.
There is.
But that's, if, if it can work for these guys to, to stand, that's great.
This is, this is a good test, I mean, this is a guy.
It's a great test, it's probably the test.
And he's the only one that keeps coming. And you pay to do them all, yeah.
So, so if this, if that could work for Mark, it works for me.
Yeah. I think it sounds great if it works for me.
I think there needs to be some limits and, and all, all abuses of.
Okay, so put that together. Okay. And that would become L and would move all the others down, is that right?
Or just included in K or, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to have them between it because then it separates it from the equivalent. I think if we put it right next to it, they're going to bleed.
Oh, okay, so separate it.
I, I like the separation.
Leave it as L.
So K will be the skid steer stuff.
Right.
And then what's the next one going to be there?
And all on, and in K, we have, we have some specifications of it, K.
Yeah.
The old one said, uh, more than five pieces, we're going to change that five to four, correct?
Yeah, I'm going off of what the.
The new version?
The, what the town, the planning commissioner recommended.
Right.
So that would be K and then this last one we just read would be what number or letter, Eric?
It would be N.
Are you taking out M as recommended by the commissioner?
I would like to, we haven't voted on that yet, but.
Yeah, so probably change again.
Remember the rest of them until you know.
Okay. But did you get that, Lynn, answer on? What, what Brennan said?
Mm-hmm. So L as written remains, businesses requiring large facilities for warehousing and wholesale distribution are not allowed. And then M, are you?
Crossing M out?
Leaving or crossing?
So I know we, we talked about what zones could be allowed in.
For twenty AM?
Uh, when, when, no, when she's going down that list and we're talking about, uh, businesses requiring large facilities for warehouse and wholesale distributions are not allowed. So is this, is this for a RA five zone and RA one zone? Where are we writing this zone for?[1636.42]